Ready to go. Order at nine o'clock AM on Wednesday morning. February 22nd.
Campbell?
Sheer.
Miller?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
There's my, uh... Agenda.
Right on top, first one. Another one?
Got it.
What?
I just have two more papers, so I'm going. Okay. Let's go for the approval of minutes right away.
Petitions or communications first?
Petitions and communications, sorry.
Okay.
We be patient.
Anybody got any communications they want to give us?
No.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes. From January 25th.
I move we approve minutes.
I second, go ahead.
Wait, I have a question. So this isn't the meeting that we... This isn't the, um, work session. This is the previous meeting.
This is the regular meeting, yes.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah, sorry, I was just finishing.
Any opposed? Okay, and it's approved.
Approval of invoices, pay those bills.
I make a motion we pay her bills. Look at them all.
Do you look at them all?
No.
Okay.
What's Out Front Media for? Is that for the...
Out Front Media is the billboard, um, just self- through the debt. Well, hi, is the billboard at Monument? Can you have Erica for the website management? Street Printing for the reprint of the restaurant guides with the visitor guide. The monthly Phillips Broadcasting for KCRT, and then postage.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Everybody here?
Mike?
Go ahead.
Chair, um, I have a request to move, um, Alisa Roth, the communications coordinator for the advertising, up in front of our interviews. She has a 10 o'clock meeting, so just to accommodate that. If that's okay with Mark?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Thank you, guys.
Good morning, how's everyone doing?
We're good.
Awesome. Okay, so this week, we have Erica in my office, and we will be working on shoring up all the loose ends with that website, putting the site maps together, setting up the brand presence. I also have a meeting this morning with a company that, um, does an app, and it's quite affordable, but I have a demo to see what it can do, to see if it'll even work for us. And I have about 200 or 300 more that are related to different aspects of our tourism industry that I'm going to test out and see what the advertising is like for those, whether we can get some free ads going, get some Google paper click ads going, so we're not putting our huge expense into that. They have a 500 for 500 right now, where you spend 500, you get 500. So it's a good deal. Um, once that's all done, we'll have established our brand presence and have free listings everywhere, and we can delve into what we want to pay for when... As far as ads go, advertising. So that's all I have, really, this morning.
Well, you've been working on a couple of other ads for us, how we've been...
Yes, yes, yeah, Elevation Outdoors, and what's the new one?
Uh, Colorado Light.
Colorado Light, yeah.
Can we see those before they're submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, she knows them.
Yeah, are you working on the logo, possibly?
Yes, I have a few samples, but I really need to get back in there and work on them before I present them to you guys. And I want to get this done this week with Erica to get that website functioning properly, so that people aren't sitting there watching it.
Well, we probably need to fill our vacancies too.
Yeah, exactly, so that's all I have.
And then revisit our RFP.
Yes, absolutely. Once that brand presence is set up, then you can do what you need to do, and you won't have any problems with people getting to you, accessing your website, anything like that. Any other questions?
Yes, you have to talk to our speaker system.
I think that was...
Making spam calls.
Okay, well, thank you, Alisa Roth. Okay, now you can go into your interviews.
Okay, we will go into the interviews of the board applicants.
So there's an introduction that we'd like you to hear about the Tourism Board itself before you begin.
Okay, the mission of the City of Trinidad Tourism Board is to increase economic development in the Trinidad area by promoting tourism. The Tourism Board, established in 2002, is comprised of five volunteers appointed by the City Council. The City of Trinidad receives 3% lodging tax that is placed into the Tourism Board fund. The Board oversees this funding by adhering to an approved annual budget, which includes funding for activities and events through a quarterly grant process and advertising and marketing of the city through various media platforms. The Board meets twice monthly, on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month, at 9:00 AM at City Hall, City Hall Chambers. First week for the work session, and the fourth week for the regular meeting. All right?
So I also want to... It's also within our bylaws that at least one person sit on this committee who's from restaurants and, um, that sector. I believe I fill that role because my product is in multiple restaurants, and I've owned a restaurant for this particular board.
What restaurant have you owned?
I own Rising Sun Distillery and Pub inside town.
Okay, but not here, not here in town?
But I have my product in three or four different restaurants in town, so I meet with them regularly, and I've owned a bar for 10 years. So in terms of expertise in that sector, I believe that's the role I fill. I don't believe we have any candidates who are in that role. We're also required to have one person from the hotel industry. And Si has stepped down from that. So that is really important, that we make sure that we have somebody who fills that role.
Can I ask a question on that? Did that change, Marty?
It has not changed. It is still, um, part of the ordinance until that ordinance is rewritten. Those are the qualifications that need to be met for the Tourism Board, however. Um, there have been instances when there were not representatives for those industries on board.
Well, so... And right now, I do not believe... Do we have any applicants?
Uh...
That are hotels that are actually...
Jason Decker would be representing for the hotel.
And you have an up and running motel?
Uh, it is not up and running. It'll be opening, uh, June 1st.
Okay, and you have license and everything prepared for that?
Well, those are all in the process. We're just doing the final touches of construction currently.
Okay.
Um, we also, the other candidates also either need to work in tourism or volunteer on some tourism-related, um, thing, and so I think...
And that's a broad scope.
Yes, but as we review these, we should, um, we should take that into consideration.
I've looked at everybody, and pretty much everybody is. Okay.
I was going to say, you're talking about candidates for the Board, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
And I know that on Friday, we will be having our retreat, and we're going to be dive deeper into Board's admissions, and Counselor may consider taking a deeper role in the candidates, you know, when they come forward.
So you will make your recommendations, but the City Council will also review all of the applications and consider your, um... Your recommendations. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you can call the first applicant, whichever you want to start with.
I don't know who... Are they in any kind of order?
Not particularly ordered, so I gave you the packet of all the applications.
I don't have that packet. I used emailed one. I got it emailed, so I have a little bit, I don't have one.
I got mine.
You have all of them?
Do I have all of them?
Did you get the whole stack?
Let me see. Yeah, I think I did, guys. Oh, no. Why, do you have them?
No, I have them now, or I gave them to you. I mean, I could look them up.
Well, I have some, but I don't have all of them.
Yeah, they're all there. They're front and back, so look on the back as well.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm looking right here, because they're all... I have several.
Are these duplicates?
No, but I'm trying to separate them, because right now, um... I don't have all of them.
Yeah, they're all there. They're, when I printed, they all came in one. They're all there.
Okay, there's the, this is on...
Okay, so there's...
This is what's going on here, right here. Look how many...
So there's J.C. Decker, yeah.
This is all very top of her name, unless they're on the back?
They are on the back.
Okay, well, let me flip it over.
So there's Lee Allen. Why don't you start with one, and let me sort these out?
Okay, Tom, let's go with you, being that we know you. She might be on the front and back on that one. Okay, if anybody has any questions for Tom, I really don't. I just want to thank you for recently submitting your application and going at this again. Thank you.
You know, I'm going to say a little bit about myself.
You can.
I'm probably the only lifelong resident of Trinidad that's applied for the Board. I'm 65 years old, born and raised here. I, um... I know you're probably asking a little bit about my advertising experience. It's funny, because I grew up selling newspapers. I worked with Chronicle News from the time I was 10 years old to the time I went to junior high school. I, uh, grew up in the magazine distribution center service. We serviced every Safeway and drugstore in Southern Colorado and Northern Mexico, so... We had every magazine that was available for selling in every one of those outlets. I worked for UPS for 35 years, and I worked in the restaurant business. I worked, uh, I ran my own business, which was a dry cleaners. I ran it for 25 years. And one of the biggest things I could say is about branding. I worked for UPS, and I watched UPS go for the growth of those years. And their branding package was... They were the highest-priced packaging company in United, or in the world, for you to ship a package, and the most successful because of the way they, they were branded and the way they advertised. They used every type of advertising that was there, whether it be billboard, radio, even their, their package cars, airplanes, everything that they had, so that's, that's my life.
Um, can you tell us a little, I sound more deeper here, but I don't really think I know what your vision is for tourism.
It's funny, my vision for Trinidad is, is to move it forward and, and... And I think one of the things about the city, I think the city needs to step forward and, and doing some things to bring in people off of I-25. Uh, I do believe that. I grew up here with Monument Lake and the golf course, which were iconic to Trinidad, and some people on the Board don't feel that Monument Lake is, is critical to Trinidad, but it, it really is. It's a, um, a resort that's owned by the City of Trinidad along with the golf course. And those two have drawn hundreds of people to this community, and, uh, I believe that is. And I think with, what the city's doing with the Fox Theater is, is another draw for the city. I do believe that space create can be, I do think that, uh, the investment that the city made in, in the space to create was, was a good investment in adding more to the city. And I do, I do believe that we need to be more in touch with the state, Colorado State, with the museums that we have, um, and their times of operation, and we have to be able to sell and advertise everything that we, we do here in Trinidad. And those, those things we have to work on.
So we also have limited resources, so how do we prioritize that?
I think, um... Well, I think we have to take each, each individual one and prioritize everyone.
I don't have any questions. I know what this philosophy is and what it is.
Yeah, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to flip to my first page, okay, that I have here. And is it Ashley?
Ashley.
Go ahead, you want that?
Ashley Ryan.
All right. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself before we ask questions?
Yes, I've been here in Trinidad for about six years. Um, I'm 45, I have four children, all which have been in the school system here for the last few years. Uh, my youngest is 10, so she's going to be going quite through it. I have been in hospitality industry. I was in hotels for 11 years, seven of which were at Pashata Casino Resort in Canada, Louisiana. I was a guest service manager at one of their resort hotels there. Um, I moved here with my husband and family in order to get into the actual cannabis business. I have a biology degree. I wanted to use that. I ended up using my, um, customer service experience instead, ended up at a retail. I am the retail manager for Native Roots. I have been for two years now. And now that I am pretty settled into my role and my career, I would like to give more to my community.
You have any questions?
You want to ask these?
You could, if, do you want to ask any particular question?
We have a set of questions to ask. We didn't ask Tom, because we know his answers are ready.
Certainly.
Uh, have you ever volunteered for a board before, and in what capacity have you had?
No, I actually have not. Um, where I live, I grew up in southwest Louisiana, but I never really felt a connection to it. Um, we came here pretty much sight unseen and looked at houses the first time we were in town, because we had heard so much wonderful things for people who live here. Um, I actually fell in love with Trinidad. I am a student of biology, so I enjoy nature. I'm a student of history, so I enjoy the wild west feel of the town. Um, my life so far has been dedicated to my career and my family, of course. So I have not had, now my three, I have four children are grown up. I'm self-sufficient, pretty much. I do have one special needs child, but he makes his grow, so, and he is. But now I have more time to dedicate to things that are help about around me and make a difference if I can.
What vision do you have for the growth of the tourism industry in Trinidad?
We have, in Trinidad, a plethora of things that are available for families. For, we have recreation, we have art. The art is fantastic here, that's such a big theme. Um, I think we just need the marketing, and we just need to be out there and say, hey, come to Trinidad. I think we have the tools we need to make it successful. We just have to put them together in the right way and get the word out that this is the place. Because it really is a beautiful place, and it has a lot to offer. Um, I first, I can see guided tours, I can see packages that we sort of put together with hotels and recreational tourists. You know, people who come in, they can buy a package for a hotel room, a guided hike, a fishing trip, those kind of things, and we need to put those together and put them out there as here, come to Trinidad and do all these things. Maybe even something with the arts, um, tours, uh, the art caves, the museums, um, everything that we have, hands-on art activities, we have those all the time. Uh, we can advertise that to tourists, and I think that would be an attractive thing for families.
So the problem with, or the challenge with that just a little bit, with what we do, is those are private industries that we put together into our packages for those. We are a public board, and our job is to advertise, and so, or, you know, to promote things that already exist in terms of our tourism assets. And you talked about marketing, like what kind of experience or background do you have in marketing?
I can't be, I can't lie to you, not a whole lot, but since I've been in Trinidad, I have learned a lot because my focus at my job right now is to try to get my company to promote Trinidad. Um, we are a corporate company. They own many, many locations across Colorado. Their focus is mostly on Denver. I'm trying to change that. Uh, I'm encouraging them to kind of run a targeted campaign for my audience to attract people maybe from Denver and other places to Trinidad on their social medias, to get people in the door. You know, we can have businesses... I'm not saying we need to control what they do, um, but maybe... I know that you guys do grants, maybe someone can get a grant, put together all these businesses or something. I'm, I'll, I'm, I'll be honest, I'm going to have to learn a little bit at first, but I am a very fast learner, and I think outside of the box. And I think I can contribute to you guys, and once I learn the rules, I can work within those batteries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think they answered all my questions too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to make a final statement?
Um, you know what? I am so glad that I got to do this. A couple of people I've seen around town, I'm not really too much of an extrovert in, you know, introducing myself and speaking up to people. I do get courage sometimes. I really appreciate you guys giving me the time to come and speak and hearing what I have to say and considering me. I think it's an honor. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, the next one I'm going to call is Joe. He's next, that's the page.
Yep.
Flip the page.
Hey, morning, everybody. I'm only fine for you.
This information is actually on the back form. That was just a clarification.
Thank you. Well, thanks for being here this morning. My name is Joe Coslowitz. I lived in Trinidad for around a year and a half. I moved here largely to open a new bicycle shop, which made for Recycle International Cycles during the Home Street Depot next to Sexy Pizza there. Um, so obviously I have a lot invested in this community already. Um, I truly believe that it is an exceptional place, not just for cycling, but just to live, love the pace of life, love the community. It's been really awesome. Starting to get plugged into things a little bit more, so I'm eager for this opportunity to be able to get back a bit to town and help build some, some new things. You'll see on my, uh, paper, I just stated out, in addition to owning a local business, which is based in the outdoor recreation industry, uh, which I believe is relevant to tourism. Um, I am also the Director of Marketing for a mid-sized corporation. Uh, so I currently oversee a $300,000 marketing budget, and I have over 10 years of experience in that space. Finally, I have helped to establish a new, um, we are officially a nonprofit as of just a couple weeks ago, um, Trails Advocacy Organization here in town. So we're still getting the ball rolling there. We haven't fully established our board, uh, but in terms of existing board experience, um, and I'm hoping to get that organization up and running. And I certainly have leadership capacity in various other areas of my life. Rete, I was part of the leadership of that. And I also started publication in college as well, so, um, kind of consistently recognized in that regard. Um, on the back here, you guys can read through this later, but I do have just kind of some general bills and recommendations, uh, should I be appointed to the Board. Namely, establish Trinidad in the public consciousness. To me, I don't think, if you go out and speak to people, um, they don't recognize Trinidad for anything specific. And I feel like you can really see that pay off decades down the line. Once you get that wedge into the public mind, um, that association lasts for many, many years. Um, these days, you might still hear people talking about gender reassignment surgeries. You know, that is still lingering decades later. And so if we can get out there and say, this is what Trinidad is, this is why people come here, I think that'll continue to pay off. Local buy-in, I think, is essential. You know, we see businesses that close during festivals on Main Street, and we can't have that type of thing. Um, everyone's not always going to be a fan of tourists, that's fine, but we need people to be enthusiastic. Um, local businesses, just the local community in general, those are our ambassadors when visitors do come to town. So without having local buy-in on whatever we're doing, if they're not reinforcing our messaging, we're dead in the water. Of course, I'd be very focused on continuing to build our outdoor recreation culture and opportunities. Right now, with Trinidadio kind of up in the air, um, these are our largest events in terms of bringing in people from outside of town. So, you know, the Rad is bringing in close to 2,000 riders, plus all their families. There's a lot more opportunity where that came from. And it is a huge industry. We have lots of competition in Colorado, but just by nature of where Trinidad is, our new state park, I think we can keep building on that for sure. Tag onto that, focusing on events and always returning downtown. So I don't want to be strictly outdoor culture in much field here. Our downtown is a treasure, and I think it's better than a lot of other similar towns. And people really enjoy that. They enjoy walking around museums, art galleries, all that type of thing. So when we have events, as we continue to build that scene, making sure that people have connections to downtown, making sure that they get the chance to experience that is vital. Um, and then lastly, going digital. It's the most cost-effective way to reach people, to reach various different personas. And so I think we really need to be focusing hard on digital advertising in particular.
Okay. You answered a couple of my questions.
Yeah, I figured I'd get it out of the way.
Yeah, yeah, get it out of the way, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
You answered all mine.
Yeah, I think you answered all mine, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, so good. All right, thank you. Okay, let me flip. Jason.
Is it okay to do a quick presentation? Hi, is it possible to log in out of the screen?
Uh, yeah, I think so. That might take me a minute. Jason, give me a minute.
Okay.
Hello. Can you just, please, can you just move it up a little? You know, by the time you move it up here and then, just say it's like, hey. Excuse me.
Is it off?
Yeah.
It's on.
Can we try to move up? Is that for this one or the other?
Hmm?
Sorry, pardon? Oh, no.
You see that one? I could see him before you even raised him, so it didn't matter. Oh, come on. Okay, Joe, you got it, let's see.
Why did you change the input?
Wifi though.
Um, I don't think I need it. Just on the TV, the input.
Oh. Is that what your screen looks like?
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay.
All right, thanks everyone. I'll keep this quick, so thanks for having me today. I just wanted to quickly go through a couple of things about me and my credentials, how I ended up in Trinidad and why I think I would be a good candidate and some ideas for future. So about me, so my background and work history. Spent about 20 years in digital marketing, which is nearly as long as that has been around. 10 of that is directly in tourism marketing. 6 directly in Colorado tourism marketing in small mountain towns. My expertise is increasing awareness of rural Colorado mountain towns and turning that into revenue. As well as experience and expertise in advertising and Facebook and Google, website development, search engine optimization, which is making sure you're visible when someone searches for something online, and video creation and advertising. I've been the former CEO of my own website development and marketing company and three e-commerce companies, two of which, which had revenues of over a million dollars a year. And currently, I'm co-owner of the Well Hotel and Tap Room with my wife, Healy. And that's why we came down here, so those are just a couple of the brands that I work with. Catabil Hotel and the Hotel Telluride. And I ran the marketing for all of the Domino's Canada branches, which was about 450 of them at the time. As far as credentials, so I believe I meet all of the criteria of living in Trinidad, being an active Los Angeles County voter and owning a tourism-related business. Currently, we are a bar and restaurant and soon to be hotel, so I think I hit all the criteria. So why we ended up in Trinidad and really the biggest reason for me was the incredible architecture, history and culture, which is not the kind of thing that you can just create. It's something that was already here and it's an unbelievable asset that anyone that steps foot downtown will immediately see. We were really excited to learn about Fisher's Peak and the expansion of that in the outdoor recreation industry and tourism. And just the easy access of getting to biking and mountain biking and hiking and all these kind of things is gonna be really appealing to a lot of people because of the traffic and congestion in a lot of the historically more well-known areas around Colorado. You know, again, just Fisher's Peak State Park is an unbelievable beauty downtown. It's an incredible resource. And having that open and expand, as we've already seen it's moving, you know, quite quickly, I think is an incredible opportunity for the area of Trinidad. And just an ideal location and the incredible amount of traffic that are already driving by Trinidad and the opportunity that we have to encourage people to get off of I-25 and come and check us out. So some of the reasons why I think I would be great for this role is, you know, again, my expertise in tourism marketing. I do have a lot of skin in the game here. You know, we've, we've moved to Trinidad and our livelihood really depends on the tourism game in Trinidad. So we have a lot, a lot of skin in the game and it's something that's unbelievably important to us. We also, I also only make data-driven decisions, so before anything is made, I like to research. I like to find data that's already available and if it's not, it's really simple, fast, free and, or very cheap to find imported data about, if you say tourism, what are the kind of people that would want to come here, what are the people that already come here, what kind of money they spend, what kind of lodging taxes you create and things like that. And also, while I have skin in the game, clearly, I'm able to make decisions on what's best for Trinidad and tourism as a whole and not just based on what's best for my business. So just as far as tourism and marketing, this is just kind of a simple marketing outline of how it works. So for someone to end up in Trinidad and spending money and creating lodging tax and revenue, they need to know about Trinidad. And I think that's somewhere that we could really improve on that a lot right now. After there's awareness about something, the next stage is interest. So Trinidad, just like anywhere else, is not gonna be for everyone. You know, Denver's not for everyone, Dale isn't for everyone, but once people are aware of Trinidad and the people that are then interested in that, they're gonna go and research us online. And right now, when you research Trinidad online, there's really a lack of information. If you search just for things to do in Trinidad, the Tourism Board website is towards the bottom of the page and I think we could really improve the awareness, information, all the incredible things to do, the hiking trails, the biking trails, the, the restaurants, the events. I think we could really improve on that a lot and show people all the amazing things to do around town. And then once, once they find that, they've done their research, they make the decision, and people come into town, they spend the night, it creates lodging and tax revenue. And I think some of the, the best ways to increase more tourism and lodging revenue is, is music events. Music is really the backbone of Colorado, for the, the size of Colorado, we have a bigger impact on the music industry than anywhere in the country. People fly from all over the world to go to places like Red Rocks, but that's just a small portion of that. And music events get people out and they don't have to be massive, expensive events to put on that will get people out of their house locally as well as drive them into town to come and stay the night. And then obviously outdoor recreation, you know, things like the Rad, other biking and miking, biking and hiking events as well as, you know, day-to-day things. We're really just starting to scratch the surface of that. I think it's an exciting time that we can really lean into this and grow into that and that's can really bring a lot of sustainable recurring revenue here. And both of those things, music and outdoor recreation, bring more awareness to Trinidad, but really just awareness of Trinidad as a whole. And, you know, I'll kind of second a lot of things that Joe said about digital advertising. It's, it's fast, it's affordable, it's easy and it's really how modern marketing is done. We could have a digital ad created by the time this meeting is over being shown to thousands of people there very affordably. And the beauty of that is you could really choose, you know, what kind of tourism do you want, what kind of people do you want? You can target directly people that are interested in historical architecture. You can target people that are interested in mountain biking and target people that are interested in, in hiking. So we could really be very specific on where you spend your money and be able to track every single bit of the way, every penny spent and see your exact ROI, so there's no guessing, it's predictable and every penny spent is allocated for and you can show what's working and what's not and lean into what does. That's all. Thank you, everyone.
I think you answered all my questions too, thank you very much, it was a great presentation. Any questions?
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Jennifer, yes.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Oliver and I am the Executive Director of the South Central Council of Governments. I have lived in Trinidad for just under one year. So I'm actually probably the demographic, not the demographic, but I am kind of a result of coming here, feeling the energy and the excitement and wanting to relocate here. So I decided to move here back in March of 2022 to get the job that I have right now. So my professional experience, I have 20 years of working in local government. Out of that, I've been working with grants, I've been working in public relations, I've been working in event planning on both sides. I've done it from the governmental side where I'm doing permitting for events, also in the nonprofit side where I'm actually planning events and implementing them and getting them worked out. I've done public relations, community relations from nonprofits for government for crisis communication during disasters and attacks. Personally, I am an outdoor enthusiast. I mountain bike, I hike, I paddleboard, I run, I polo. I do as many things as I can to challenge myself. What can I bring? I think what I'm looking to do in order to make an impact in this region, as part of my job, is to align what the unique qualities of this place are. So I, I represent both Orpino and Los Angeles County within my role and I work closely with the City of Trinidad and the Counties of Los Angeles, Orpino and the City of Walthamburg. And I think it is important to identify what makes some place unique. And that is kind of an unquantifiable thing. Yes, you need the marketing and I understand that that is the primary role of this, of this board. I don't have the digital marketing, marketing expertise. I don't have, not in the hotel industry. I bring more of just a desire to volunteer and help. I'm always looking to make wherever I am a better place. And I have some, my professional skills as well as my personal dedication, I'm willing to do whatever needs to be done to make where I live a better place and to contribute successfully to that. In order to provide for effective, I don't know, tourism is, is one of those things. It's like what, what, what makes someone want to come here? And that's something that I do a lot when I travel around, I ask, I just say, okay, I'm living in Trinidad, Colorado, what do you know about Trinidad? And I'm kind of at a ten, oh, it's the sexiest capital of the world. Yep, that's, that's what we know about it, that's what I had my impression of it and that was decades old, as we've already talked about. And we do have the traffic, we have people coming through, we have the ability to bring people off of the freeway because they're gonna be coming here for any gas and food. How do we deepen that connection? So marketing is the key for that. I think the best summation of where I can assist is thinking outside the box, looking at ways in which, you, you want to take a look at what, what, what drives you individually, what drives you, me, individually to make a decision to come somewhere? What makes them invest? And you have to align a variety of factors, not only the events, you have to have people coming here, you have to have infrastructure, you have to have some business incentives, business credits, business-friendly environment. And because if you're bringing people here and there isn't that kind of infrastructure to support the people that are coming here, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a barrier. So how do you overcome those things? And that's all in line with aligning whatever the city has in terms of their strategic plan and I know you're having your retreat. And I know that the city manager is really strong on kind of identifying a path forward because there are so many different facets here in Trinidad, as well as Los Angeles County, to leverage not only what is already there and that, the qualities that make Trinidad unique, but also incorporating some best practices to bring in some new people as well. And so in order to be successful, you have to blend the two, so you're not shutting the door on any particular group. And that, 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 that is key and that's not easy to do. I come from Reno, Nevada, which is very, very similar and it's a larger community, but you have, you have a gambling-based industry, you have ranching, you have kind of an entrepreneurial spirit and they all kind of merge together. And I have worked with the Reno Sparks Visitor Convention Authority on many different levels in order to help kind of allow for broad events that kind of tie in the individual culture. So we have agricultural tourism with ranching. So we're bringing in art and ranching and merging those two together and making it kind of a, a more of a, a high-end experience for people to not only see what goes into the ranching lifestyle, but also how it can incorporate and how it has become an art form. And there is livelihood that people are making as, as a result of this kind of blend. And that has turned into a successful event. I was part of the Maker Faire, bringing in a Maker Faire in Washoe County and that was in 2013. And that has been an annual event which we aligned with TEDx or TED, for the TED Talks. And that has grown tremendously, it started with about 34 vendors and now it's, it's a huge multi-day event. Do you know what Maker Faires are? Know that terminology? Kind of DIY art, technology, industry, if they all kind of merges together. And so I think that, I apologize, I feel like I'm all over the place. So you apologize for that. But I have a lot of ideas and at the end of the day, I like to make where I live a better place. And I like to do so by not installing what I think is best, but in listening. So that's something that I've been doing for the past year. Cause I've kind of took a listen as to what is the flavor of the community I'm in? What is it that is gonna make people tick and what are people gonna respond to? My lens is beyond just to get Trinidad out in terms of my profession and looking to kind of tie in both Orpino and Los Angeles County. And as a result, I sit on the Los Angeles County Outdoor Recreation and Economic Development Committee.
Los Angeles County or Querfano County?
Los Angeles. It's in Los Angeles, but they're also looking at Highway 12, kind of incorporating that, that touches into Orpino as well. So one of your questions was the boards. I've served on a number of boards in a variety of capacities. I've served on, I've done radio, I've done sound editing, volunteering. I've, I've sat as a Commissioner for Outdoor Recreation and Economic Development in Washoe County, Nevada. I've been on many citizen advisory boards and community boards for the Washoe County and the City of Reno. And on the Bluegrass Association Board, ICEN, so I do barbershop and I'm on that board as well. So I volunteer my time, to my own expense, but any questions?
Any questions?
We're very thorough. Thank you. I was all over the map. You're being kind, I was not thorough, but thank you.
Amanda.
Amanda has pulled her application.
Lee. And I don't know where my sheet on her is.
She's on the backside of it. It's okay, I also brought some stuff for you guys.
It's on the backside of what?
Amanda's. It's in front of that.
Oh, I see, now, got it.
Okay. Part of a tent, but also a resume. So, I need to give you guys a shout out. So I should see from my resume, I am primarily an IC
So I should see from my resume, I am primarily an ICU nurse. I was an ICU nurse for over a decade and I worked as a charge nurse and preceptor. So I'm one of those people who I like the rules and I like to make sure that I function within the rules. So when I started looking at being part of this board, I wanted to make sure that I was actually the correct applicant. And I found this information that the five members, surely could be residents or voters of Trinidad, and that they have to own a tourism-related business. And that that is capitalized, so that is the number one thing for being considered for this board. So I'd like to make the point that I own a tourism-related business in Trinidad. I am co-er of Fisher's Peak Outfitters. And I have been working in that business for almost two years. I have been very careful to not only bring in tourists to Trinidad, but also clear the tourists who do organically come here. We have been able to have tourists come in. They look at my Google app to get their hunting or fishing license into Trinidad. Most people want to get that as soon as they enter the state. I pull them off the highway with that Google app. Once they're in the store, we tell them all about Trinidad, what you can do. And I have actually gotten people to change their plans from going further north to actually stay and fish in Trinidad. They'll rent gear from us, they'll then go to Dorothy, they'll go to Trinidad Lake, they'll then go to Gosekia also, and Monument Lake. I was actually able to get five tourists this year to change their plans to do that, which then increased them staying in Trinidad and then increased revenue from, to Tourism Board for that stay. So, you know, it is important that when we do bring in these tours, that we are giving them the resources of where to go and what to do. There is not a lot of searchability online for that. And I think that that is a missed opportunity because of the number one thing. When people come in my shop, they say, are there fish here? Like, I cannot believe how many people do not think that there's actual fish here. And that Trinidad is a great resource for fishing, biking, outdoor community. But we also have wonderful arts and shops in that town, in our town. And as an artist and as the founder of the Trinidad Arts Fest, I've not only brought in people to Trinidad for the Trinidad Arts Fest, Mardi can tell you, we actually had a bus from our advertisements that Tourism Board was, helped us secure funds for, that actually came down from Colorado Springs to the Trinidad Arts Fest. We're going to have a two-day festival again this year. We'll actually have one day festivals last year, which was our inaugural year. And so we hope to continue to not only bring people here for outdoor rep, which is my actual business, but also because I am an artist, I feel very strongly about bringing people here for the arts as well. So I do serve on that board and I'm the president of that board. And I do tourism-based business. Thanks, sorry guys, feel more anxious. So what else? I think that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? I know who she is.
I have one, just curiosity. And you may have stated part of this, you brought us this copy, the saving of the city ordinance.
Yeah.
Why, I mean, just curious, why did you, what did you want to point out?
I just wanted to point out that myself, I am within this of having that tourism-related business, which is the number one criteria for this board. And so I wanted to point out because I like to make sure I follow the rules, that I am that applicant.
Okay, I was just curious, somebody suggested that you weren't, or?
No, no, I just liked to point it out because as, when I started researching, I wasn't really sure exactly what the credentials we needed for this board were. So I like to research everything very thoroughly. It's hard being an old nurse, which is like being.
Just curious.
I know, you answered all my questions.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah.
No, I also don't. Thanks, thanks. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
That's all it, right?
That's it.
One of the, one of the mentions, something is that there was a lot of good presentations today. Appreciate everyone applying. And I want to mention that after last night's meeting, one of the things that we may be, I think it was last night or last week's meeting, we may decide to do is bring all the applicants forward to a work session to do a presentation to council as well, rather than just go on your recommendations. We'll consider that as well, but also the information that we received, which you've sent to all of us, but we may have them come forward to do a presentation in front of council as well.
Okay. I also would like to thank all of you for coming. It was a great presentation. I don't think we've ever had this many applications before the Tourism Board. It is wonderful to see it. That I don't, I, when I first got on the board, I questioned what the Tourism Board did. And I have learned a lot, what people don't realize what we do behind the scenes, as far as our advertising goes. We are in a lot of magazines, we are a lot of billboards, and sometimes I do not think a lot of people realize that, what we do for the City of Trinidad. And we have, I have gone out of town and I do also have a shop that many people come into my shop and they are well aware of Trinidad, they're well aware of what we have to offer, they were well aware of Fisher's Peak, and they are well aware of the less traffic coming down to our part of the country. So it is, thank you all, thank you.
I have one comment, too, that we obviously got more qualified people than we have positions on the board. If, if you're not, you know, recommended to the council for membership on this board, I do highly hope that you will get involved. Come to our meetings, you'll give us your input. That is, you, the five that sit up here are desperately listening to everyone. And I think some of you, of all of you have great ideas. So, you know, please stay involved, keep up with what we're doing and thank you for being here.
Is every two or three board meeting open for public comment?
Yes.
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 Just for your curiosity, all boards and commissions as well as city council, they're all open.
Okay, thank you. All right, shall we move?
I have a question, too, Mary.
Yes.
We can, we still recommend.
You still recommend? And you, you'll take a vote verbally or you can take it by just a, just a ballot?
In those, the ones that, those two will come for you.
Yeah, votes you present to us, but we may bring all of them in and raise this down for consideration as well.
So on the forms that I gave you, and she's allowed to score them, with a number at the top, one through six, if you like, and then the end with best name. Or you can just write them on the back of that sheet, your questionnaire sheet, the two applicants that you would like to recommend to council.
Can, can we just do it verbally?
Or you can do it verbally.
You want to do it verbally or you want to write it on a piece of paper? We're all gonna, this is, this is a tough decision. I just want you to know, this is, this is quite interesting.
I would say that, you know, I was going to say this, but everybody's pretty much left. But you have a lot of good applicants.
We do.
And it's good to see that the quality of applicants.
Definitely increases.
So I do have a question because you were related to Tom. If you need to recuse yourself from that vote, I don't.
Then we wouldn't have a vote at all. You need three people.
You have to have.
And I don't think it ever affected us before, yeah.
Okay, I just know that he has recused himself when there have been votes with people he's related to. This is related to him. Yeah, but also like some other, there were some, no, back.
Yeah, it puts you guys in a very peculiar predicament, it does.
We're too small a community to, I mean, everybody's related to somebody or close friends or who knows?
And this is a recommendation, this isn't a final decision.
A recommendation, so let's do the first one first. Let's, or do we put two of them together or one at a time?
I do one at a time. I recommend Tom press because of his experience and.
Because of his experience and I don't think he's done yet, quite yet. So I do second it.
I'm not going to vote for Tom. I think the others are far more qualified. I love Tom, I think he's fantastic and I think he's done a great job. But I think we have some people who have a lot more experience.
I, I, I'm not going to go that. I don't think that, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that's, two to one, Tom's first recommendation and.
And Jason is the only person who owns a hotel. So I think we almost have to vote for Jason.
No, you don't have to.
Well, it's on our bylaws.
He's not opening and running. He's not opening and running. We're not collecting any tax from him quite yet.
Yeah, but he also has a guest house in town that he didn't talk about.
Well, he didn't, he didn't talk about.
They also own another hotel.
There's, there's no have to on this, Tom. I, I make a recommendation, our second recommendation to the council is Joe. And I will not try to say his last name. As well as. Just, just.
I would like to make a second recommendation for Jason because he is in the lodging industry and he also owns a bar. I think Joe's fantastic, too. So my third recommendation would be Joe.
I, yeah, I just.
I'm going to second with Joe. I liked his presentation. I liked his, everything that he had to say. I did.
I, I still think we have bylaws here, so that's a problem. We don't have anybody who represents hotels.
No, we don't. Then we might have to put that all out again.
So then we should push forward, three people, I think, recommendation to the council.
And then let council make the final decision.
And then let council make the final decision because we should follow the bylaws of our.
And those bylaws may be changing, so.
Yeah.
Putting that out there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with.
You know, it's unfortunate that we can't expand immediately this board to seven because of the applicants that you have.
I would love to see this board extended to seven.
Go on to that voting divide. You would have to go on that voting.
Yeah, I think extending this board to seven would make sense. I mean, they're like your chairs.
I'll be honest with you, there were some questions. I'm not going to say what they are because I will bring those up myself when we bring them forward. But I think there were some questions that you guys missed, a couple.
Okay, I think we put the, the decision-making to the council and give you three.
Okay.
And then if y'all want to go deeper, that's up to you guys. Obviously, y'all are in turn and we're proud of that. There, I.
Yeah, I would have liked to vote for Jason, but I just don't think he's qualified quite yet, so.
He has, he has 20 years of tourism marketing. I mean, that's what he's done for his entire.
He doesn't have a hotel yet.
Yeah, but he doesn't.
He doesn't have a hotel yet.
But he does own a hotel, just his hotel here is in construction.
It's, you set the key, under construction.
But they own another hotel in New Orleans.
It's, that's what we're being trying to compare.
I'm not.
Could you, could you guys kind of lower, lower the tone here a little bit?
Yeah, I don't think we need to debate.
No, we're, like, we don't, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying the experience of all the.
I think you guys have already made your recommendations and please let them stand.
Okay, I do.
All right, Racton Visitor Guide, right?
Supha signs updates, the old business. So just to bring you up to speed on the Supha signs, they have arrived. Both of the kiosks are being stored in the Conex Building by the water department. I'm maintaining communications with Supha to get the installation done. The first thing that needs to be done for the location on Main Street at the Miners Memorial is for a concrete slab so that it can be mounted. We've only been waiting for weather to clear up so that the concrete can be poured. I'm meeting with Bob Just this week to specify which location, I mean, the exact location of the Supha signs. And then as soon as the weather's good, then they'll pour that concrete. The map for the sign is being worked on per your recommendations of using the historic Corazon District with directional signage on, or directional marking on there to point out Central Park, Simpson's Rest, the college, the archaeology museum, and the hospital, and Kate Carson Park. So those will all be with arrows directing them to those areas. And it also has a legend at the bottom, similar to what the visitor guide has. The map that you have in the center of the visitor guide is a really good map with the specific tourism venues that we have like AR Mitchell Museum or the Welfare Center or, you know, different locations within the city following that, those guidelines that are in the visitor guide. And so the next thing that's happening is the sponsorship. So the city has declined sponsorship of the wrap of the entire Supha signs. So per your recommendations, we are sending that out for sponsorship bits to get the sponsor for that, those signs.
Although we did say that we would like to have some, something on there that shows the city of Trinidad.
So I'm looking at the, the, the city logo.
Somebody didn't hard sell enough.
And that's all I have on the Supha signs. So we should have those installed within, weather permitting, within probably the next three weeks. And no update on the van, so, sorry.
I have a question. The advertising opportunity on the kiosk signs, where is that information going to be given for pricing and for availability?
That will be, Supha will handle the advertising on that. So we recommend those advertisers that are interested in doing that. There's two opportunities. So there's the entire wrap of the sign on both signs, so there's two there. And then there's digital advertising that will be sent out to all the local businesses or organizations, et cetera, that have, you know, have advertising they want to put out.
May I suggest that we also assist in that in the fact that we have email addresses to businesses?
Absolutely, yes. You will receive an entire package on what you want on those digital signs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Anisa's already presented, so the next one is the visitor guide. So in front of you, you have a copy of last year's visitor guide. Not real happy with it at all, as far as the ad goes. But the opportunity is, has arisen again. So if you would like to have Anisa design a new ad with, you know, following your recommendations, you can do that or you can.
Is this this one that we're looking at?
Yeah, that bottom on the right, on the left-hand side, bottom ad.
Where is it?
It's probably in, almost, it is in the middle of the book, isn't it? Not really.
Some page, what page is that of?
It's the second from.
There's a page on the bottom.
I want you to see pages on this book, so.
They're, they're on the bottom corner, maybe just not on the page you're looking at.
Well, go to the middle of the book and then flip back one. Brown page.
Would be thirty.
Would it be?
Yeah, it's hard to tell it's even us.
It's hard to tell it's even us.
It's really bad.
Okay, thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-two, thirty-one. Went backwards.
So for a half page last year, you paid $625 and you were featured on the Racton website.
How much did we pay?
Six hundred and twenty-five.
For that, you don't even know it's Trinidad? I mean, there's our little tiny P M logo.
Well, yep.
It does say Trinidad up there, but yeah, and Fisher's Peak.
That's a pretty bad ad, I agree.
I think it's, it's worth the money as long as it's an ad that actually works.
Right.
I think we all agree that it's, we need a new ad on there.
And the half page is pretty small.
How much is a whole page?
Twelve fifty.
For the year?
Yes. They only publish once. It's their visitor guide.
What's our budget looking like?
We're in good shape.
Yeah.
We're all just distributed that.
I would actually, in this case, propose that we do a full-page ad because I think Trinidad and Racton are kind of two cousins, right? And if they pick up our visitor guide, they're likely to pick up their visitor guide. They're often likely to go between two towns.
I distribute probably 600 of our visitor guides in Racton.
Hold up, just open up, just hit any page.
We need a new ad.
Want to see it?
Not necessarily, I was just looking at, because in size of the, of the magazine itself.
Yeah, this is ours.
Half pages, pretty, pretty scripty.
How many of our visitor guides do they hand out?
You said 600.
600.
How many do we hand out of theirs?
Not that many, simply because Colorado Tourism Office does not allow us to distribute out-of-state publications. So, but they do tell us that we can keep them behind the counter, we just can't display them. So if somebody's asking about, they're going to Racton and they want something. So if somebody's asking about, they're going to Raton, and they want something about Raton or New Mexico, that's what we give them. And we can also distribute and keep behind the counter the New Mexico state map. So those two pieces, we do have behind the counter, we're just not allowed to display them.
When's it due?
This is due, um... Good question.
Well, I, that's, yeah, I make, if you'll make the motion, I'll second to do a full page.
I, I, I'm a little torn on this, but I'd like, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we should do a full page. Otherwise, we shouldn't do it at all. It's kind of how I feel, because this is ridiculous, you know? We can't find-
And considering it's Raton, that's the biggest, our biggest, right there. That's our, our, as they say, our sister city, or, we would try to work together anyway.
Yeah, I can see that.
I know it's soon, I think it's, it's in March.
Then I'll make the motion.
You know, I, I could see that. If you're committed to do this, and you'll yet have a page, it's easy to go right by.
It's easy to just pass by.
It's easy to go right by.
And I mean, this looks like it could be an ad for Raton, too. I mean, the little map there, it just doesn't really say anything. And then, I mean, it's got the Trinidad True Outdoors, which is Jared's thing. That's not really us.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't think we need to discuss the ad that's in here, because we're obviously not happy with it, just whether we put one in or not.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, if we're going to do it, let's do a full-page ad.
I second.
Okay.
But that's not a motion to do it, that's if we're going to do it.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we do a full-page ad.
I second that.
And redesign the ad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, Summer Getaways, I think I gave you that magazine. I only have two copies, Tom, so somebody's gonna have to share with you.
It's that.
Last year's ad.
I got both copies.
Oh, it's the same ad, pretty much, just as bad.
No, that's the Raton visit, no, well, let's see.
Let's see. It looks almost like the Raton Visitors Guide.
Is it the same thing?
It's got our golf course on that one.
It's got different photos, it still says Trinidad True.
But that True Outdoors, that-
That's Jared's.
Just Jared, and that's gotta come on.
Jared is not Jared. Jared is the office of tourism, of the Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation. That doesn't make it Jared's, that makes it a city organization.
But he owns that domain.
He doesn't own anything.
He told us that he did own that domain.
He does not own the domain. It's a city website. The Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation is a city website.
Okay.
When it started out, I think, to some extent, you might be right, but I think that's been changed.
Okay, 'cause that's what he told us in one of our-
That's what he told us, yeah.
But I think that's been changed. Now, now that was some concern within, I think, city managers as well.
It was. And I, I don't, I don't think that, that is, the only one ad I don't like is this one I hear at the back of somebody hiking. But I, I, it shows beautiful mountain range, it shows golf courts, biking.
I think it's just a messy ad.
Yeah.
It's not very clear. It doesn't say why you should come here. It doesn't say-
Again, I think all of our ads are gonna change with Anisa, and this-
Well, and hopefully in RFP, because I don't know that if this, we haven't seen her this as aesthetic. We don't know what she's gonna offer us yet.
You did see the Elevation Outdoors ad, I did send that out to you for a few.
I didn't see that one.
Um, I do have an issue with, we need to be consistent. It was chosen by that office of the city to call it True, you know, Trinidad True this, True that. And that's not what we're projecting.
Well, and that's also New Mexico's tagline.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's really appropriate for what we're doing.
I do like, I do not like the Trinidad True Outdoors on it at all. That's not us. I would just like, you know.
I know he was trying to do something, because there's, there wasn't much. But I don't think that is what we, I think we need to agree on how these look and what we're promoting. And I, I think that Trinidad True is not, I mean, there's no branding with it either.
Yeah. Can't agree with that.
And if, in the, in the future, once we get a full board again, and get moving, I would, you know, would hope we would attempt to have a, a, another retreat with, you know, just the board and some of the city staff.
I was gonna say, I heard that I was not there at the retreat, 'cause I thought we should not be there. However, though, from what I've heard, that it was too broad, there were too many people.
Right.
And it should be only, should have been only the board.
The board.
Yeah.
And no city employees. I mean, a retreat is us going, us going in.
And then just, just like our retreat on Friday, it's staff, city staff, and council.
Right.
I would think-
We, I think we were both blindsided by that when we saw the amount of people walking in there, because that was not what we were expecting.
It was, is, it was, actually, I was embarrassed that, the way it went down.
I was totally embarrassed.
And some of the comments that were made to some of the people that weren't there, but, you know.
And so how some were invited and some were not, how they got messages out, and how some of them didn't get messages out.
Completely.
Some got emails, some didn't get emails.
And they got them like at nine o'clock, nine and a half, four, which is not okay either. There were a lot of problems, it's still-
There was a lot of problems.
Well, it sounds like maybe you guys do need to refocus, get a new retreat.
New retreat, and, and no one, no, and just us. Yeah, just us.
Well, I, and city staff, what needs to come.
Um, all right, so what do we decide on this, 'cause we need to get going.
Oh, okay.
This is, what's the circulation? This comes from the Denver Post.
This is inserted in the Denver Post, just, so, your deadline is April 27th. Creatives are due May the 4th.
They have a circulation report in here.
Um...
I think we move to do it another again, but have her try to do something of a different ad and take Trinidad True Outdoors out of there completely.
Estimated circulation is 70,000, Chris.
So I would like to suggest that we ask her to mock something before we make a decision whether to put it into this magazine or not, so we can see what we're getting. What happens is we often get these at the last minute. We have to make the decision on going forward or not, without having to see the artwork and what we want to put forward.
Seventy thousand is all?
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, I'm not real sure that-
How much is it?
Estimated circulation is 70,000.
Yeah, much is the ad, the half-page?
Uh, for a half-page, it is, um, 1,000.
Do we have any data on, say, something like the rad, and who, who, where those people were coming from? Do we know where the majority of them coming from Denver? Where's the majority of them coming from?
Well, yeah, as a matter of fact, you could probably get that from Jared, 'cause he works closely with Tamra. And Tamra, they have, you know, everybody who signs up, I'm sure they have to say where they're coming from.
I think it'd be really helpful for us to know where they were coming from, because they collect all that data, and also the Pony Express, so that, like, when we're doing an ad that's really targeted towards outdoor recreation, we have an idea of who actually came down for those events, or where they're coming from. So then we can focus our advertising, maybe the Denver Post is a focus for this, maybe it's the Colorado Springs Gazette, maybe it's, I don't know, a San Antonio paper, if most of the people were coming from there. I think would just be some good information for us.
I will say this, 'cause I, you know, I volunteered at the Boulders site. And that's where I think the majority of the writers were, 'cause they were 99 and 165 writers. And I, a lot, a lot of people from Texas, a lot of people from the Boulder area, Denver area, some people from the western part of the state. But there were people from all over the country. And there were people from other nations as well.
Sure, but if we get a data like, you know, that as 700 people, 200 came from the Springs, we should probably focus our advertising there. If we see 10 people came from Boulder, and 150 came from, you know, Durango, then maybe we should focus in Durango, not, you know.
But I just gave you some idea as to what I saw, as far as, you know, where people, the ridership came from.
We're not gonna be able to target every town that everybody came from. But we could make some macro decisions based on some of that.
I do know that there were, it seemed like there was a, a lot more people, maybe from the Boulder area. I may be wrong.
Um, all right, so can we see what she can do? Can we see what Anisa would put up together, and then decide on this particular ad, and maybe get some data first on?
And, and all in honesty, I don't, yeah, seventy, you said 70,000?
Seventy thousand.
You know, a thousand-dollar ad, that's not a bad price, considering, but a lot of things are going for it.
I mean, I think it's a good target, and I think it's a good market. I don't think it's a bad place to advertise, but I'd like to see what she does, and I'd like to get that information from the writers, and especially, and the Pony Express writers, too. We can, I don't know if we get data on any other events that are targeting outdoor recreation like this, that we just to have an idea. That's why I'm focused on those. If we had where people were coming from specifically for other things, like if we had other ticketed events that we knew where people were coming from, we could use that, but we don't have that data. At least at this point.
So tables, summer getaways, for now, is that?
Yeah, and can she, can we ask Anisa to mock that?
I think you'll make a motion to table that. If, this is right, you're meeting, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table the summer getaways until we see an ad from it.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I want to know where the snow came from, where the foggy weather. Where's the wind? Where's the wind?
Can I make that motion to a juror?